Well, welcome to the Meet the Candidates Forum hosted by Noon Koanis and Access Television. I am Sarah Duffy, President of Noon Koanis, and it's our privilege to provide an opportunity for the residents to become familiar with people running for city council office. Today's forum will be broadcast on Access Television prior to the elections. We are also going to upload it to the Fergus Falls Noon Koanis Facebook page, and so you can also view it on social media prior to the elections on November 6th. I am pleased to be your moderator today and again on Friday for Ward Three. Today, we will meet the candidates from Ward Four. We have Caroline Gustafson, Rod Speedall, and John Strach. Ward Four represents the southwest part of Fergus Falls and residents vote at the Hillcrest Gymnasium. We'll open today with the candidates introducing themselves and sharing why they are running for city council office. They'll have three minutes for the introduction, and then we will go into the question and answer session. We'll rotate who answers first, so there's no unfair advantage. The answer period will be for two minutes unless I note otherwise. There is one question that will be for three minutes. It's more in-depth, and I'll note that prior to providing the candidates with that question. Jean will serve as timekeeper here. She'll wave the yellow flag when you've got 30 seconds left, and she'll wave the red flag when your time is up. Please respect the flag, so I don't have to interject. All candidates have seen the questions, so there is no unfair advantage to going first. We'll start the clock when you start speaking. If you need me to repeat a question, I'm happy to do so. Just ask me, and we'll conclude today by offering you the opportunity to provide a closing statement, and that'll be a two-minute closing statement. We ask that the audience please respectively listen to each candidate's answers and avoid conversations during the forum. Please also hold any applause until the end of the forum. And as always, please remember to turn off your cellphones and not be that one person. Thank you. So, without further ado, I think we're all ready to proceed. Caroline, I'm going to start with you first, if you want to provide your introduction and tell us why you are running for city council office.
Sure. First, I'd like to thank the Koanis Club for hosting the candidate forums this week. I think it's important for everyone to be a knowledgeable voter. Like Sarah said, my name is Caroline Gustafson. I was born in Fergus Falls, and I was raised just south of town near Orwell Dam, and I graduated from the Fergus Falls High School. Kind of an ironic chain of events led me back to Fergus Falls after graduating from South Dakota State University. I was hired as the head girl soccer coach for the Otters, and then as a sports trainer at Lake Region Healthcare. I've been a wellness trainer at Lake Region Healthcare now for 10 years, and I'm on several community and church boards and groups. I've been asked pretty often why I'm running for city council, and with my extensive involvement in the various boards and groups, I thought it was a logical next step to contribute to our community. I've also been asked what I want to change. Many people are expecting a pretty elaborate answer, but it's pretty simple. I want to change the demographic of the city council. I want a woman's voice and perspective, and I want another option for people to connect with. I love the city of Fergus Falls. We have wonderful, wonderful people and a beautiful city. My husband and I have three young children, and we had options to live in other communities, but we chose this one. I believe in building respectful relationships, being kind to others, and standing up for what I think is right.
Thank you. Rod?
Yes, and thank you for hosting this and your work, Jean and Sarah. Thank you for those who attended, who are attending. And my name is Rod Speedall. I have lived in Fergus Falls off and on for most of my life, since I was one-year-old. I am married to Alice Speedall. We celebrate our anniversary in 12 days, 41 years. We've traveled around and been involved in a number of activities in Fergus area, so I see myself as a Fergus area person. Speedall Ski Guard helped start that in '75, and served at some churches in the area, and been involved with family businesses and things like that. So, we've always come back to Fergus Falls, even though we've traveled, and our love for Fergus Falls has brought us back here, both the place, the geography, the people, and then we have families. Both Alice and I have families. We have, I have three children with Alice. We have my first wife, and that's, yeah. That comes from being in Cameroon. We worked in a mission, and the Muslims would always ask if this was like your first or second wife or something. I said, "This is my first wife, Alice." And so, but we have three children, and Seth is our oldest, and he's a major in the Air Force, and Minat Andrews, our middle son, and he's an ordained pastor and works in community development in Holland, Michigan. And then Kristen, our daughter, has her own business in Fergus Falls and lives with her husband here, Josh. As I thought about running for this position four years ago, it was sort of like, it was a last-minute, final decision. I had thought of it eight years ago, or 12 years ago, and I hadn't done anything, but I ran as a write-in. I was thinking I ran as a write-in four years ago. So, it's a very different, I will say, different place to be, you know, as a write-in versus an incumbent, and that's kind of strange. But I guess I would say that I'm running because we have started things in Fergus Falls, been successful in getting grants. I've worked on some of those, and would like to carry out and apply that $1.2 million that I have, with city staff and others, have worked to get secured for Fergus Falls and make those projects a reality, and we're starting to do that. I see the momentum changing. Fergus is a great place. Love to live here, and I love my job as a city council person, so thank you.
Thank you, Rod. John?
Hello. I'd like to thank everybody who was involved in putting this together, and the audience, and all the people that are not able to be here but are going to be able to watch it later on. I was born here in 1961, went to school here, lived my childhood years here, and gotta say, it's definitely changed since then. There's been a lot of changes to Fergus Falls since 1960s. Some good, some not so good. We've lost some businesses, and we have opportunities for more. I ran for city council the first time quite a few years ago when I was working in a home. I lived here all my life except for seven years that I was in Colorado, and I learned the business of floor covering and painting from an uncle. And since I came back in '91, that's what I have done, has been self-employed businessman, and worked in a lot of homes in Fergus Falls, met a lot of people. And one of the people I met, he said, "If you want some changes, then don't just talk about it, do something. Run for office." So, I ran for office. Got a chance to experience what it's all about, and it was quite an experience. It was an eye-opener. And since then, I've ran for mayor and council, and I've always gotten close but not sitting up here and not being a part of the decision-making. I've been in the audience, watching for many, many years, seeing how things are done. Now, I feel that it would be nice to be up here to make these decisions for the fourth ward. We have some big decisions coming up. We have the state hospital, the RTC, the Kirkbride, that I was involved in ever since the state gave it to Fergus Falls, and they wanted to take their hands away from it. And there's been many things, that's one of the questions we'll go into later, but that's going to be a good factor, that that might come into play, this terms here, as to what happens with that property. There's also recently the dairy property that's going to possibly be purchased by the city, the way it looks. And the flour mill is now looking like it has an opportunity to be restored or to have something done to it. That has been an eyesore to the people in this community for a long time. We drive by, all of us, many, many times. We see it. It's this big brick concrete building that has potential, but sitting there the way it is, is not, is an eyesore. And so, I want to be a part of these decision-making decisions, because up here is the people who decide for our city. Every time we have a council meeting, the council members decide which direction the city goes, and that can either be good or bad. And so, I'm hoping to be a part of that, and we'll see you on November 6th. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go into the question-answer session, and as I said before, we're going to rotate who answers first, and the first question, we'll start with you, Caroline. And the question is, "The city's 2018 budget is just over $45.5 million annually. Please tell us your budget and finance experience demonstrating how you would be a fiscally responsible candidate."
Every year, I coordinate the Lake Region Run and am solely responsible for that event's budget. My goal is to raise money for Lake Region Healthcare's Cancer Care and Research Center, and it is my responsibility to set the registration fees, search for and purchase reasonable amenities, and communicate with sponsors and potential sponsors. Beyond the Lake Region Run, I work with my supervisor to settle our fiscal year budget. Our budget involves many sources of income, including grants. I help set up the needs and wants in our department, and it's important that I know the difference. I spent time at City Hall learning about the budget. There's many things that go into a budget of this size, but I think our city staff has done a great job and is in solid financial standing.
Thank you. Mr. Speedall?
When I see a city budget, I don't just see dollars and lines, and when I ask, when I have something I have a question about, I do ask Bill Sonmore and the staff and the department heads, and so there is a great team here that helps us, because we couldn't get up to that curve, that speed, very easily. But to put the budget in context, as we talk about that, my background has been in business, in small business, and I have had numerous employees at different times. I put myself through college with my concession business, and our families have been in business on both sides, my wife's and mine. But when I see a budget, I see homeowners, renters, business people behind those figures, because without that budget input from the taxes and the people that contribute by living in Fergus Falls, we would not have a Bill Sonmore or someone else to go to. We have to depend on taxpayers for this budget. So, I see people and users that have needs. I see their houses not being shingled. I see paint peeling off, and I look at our tax levies and say, "We have to make sure we're very responsible fiscally." Now, simply put, fiscally responsible with a budget means more than saving to me. It means that you look ahead to the input side. You decide, "What are you going to do about your tax base?", because you have to expand your tax base to keep up on your improvements and your other projects. So, I've taken the position on council of going forward with projects, trying to get grants, to increase our tax base, create land area that can be developed, that has recreational economic potential, and these things have been my emphases on council. And I'll continue to do that collaboratively with the city, with legislators and others that I've built relationships with, to keep that kind of approach going, both fiscally responsible but also going after the tax base increase. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
For the past 25 years, I've been self-employed and have learned how to live within my means. It's been a great learning experience that could be an asset to the city. If I were elected, I would ask, "What projects are feasible within the budget? There's some that are very costly and some that are cost-efficient, and we can do a lot with a few dollars. Is the project needed or a want? And could I utilize the wisdom on those around me to make sound judgments?" In my business, it's kind of like building a house. You decide what products to use, what's going to be the best results, and where you can cut corners and where you don't want to cut corners. To me, running a city is very similar. There's areas where you can't cut corners. There's roads that need to be upgraded, to me, in good standards we're driving on. There's infrastructure. There's the sewage. There's the water. There's important things that can't be neglected. And just like a house, there's your foundation that has to be good. Without that, your house is going to have serious problems. And so, with that experience, I believe I can be a strong thing for the city. We can utilize existing possibilities to bring revenue in for the city. The RTC has been sitting empty for a long time. The cost of weddings is very expensive, I found out recently. We could have weddings up there, just for one example, and I will get into that more later, but thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, we'll start with Rod. And as we all know, there's a lot going on in our city currently, but to get things done, sometimes we have to prioritize. If elected, what are your top three priorities for the city, and how do they fit into the budget?
Thank you for that question. Top priority for me is to be fiscally responsible on all projects while increasing, as I said, our tax income side of the equation. We do this by supporting and strengthening the current businesses and industries, 17 some industries that we have in Fergus, that are healthy but also can produce more and can, in collaboration with other groups that are brought in, other businesses alongside, be even more effective in stimulating our economy. In light of Otter Tail Powers' impending closure of the coal-fired plant, we'll be making up about a 5.5% deficit pretty much every year in our tax levy. That has to be made up, and with recent closures we've had that everyone's aware of, we have to watch our expenditures and at the same time prioritize the number of projects we have. So, I liken our projects to like to being on a takeoff with planes. You have many planes there, and we have to act as a control tower in a sense to make sure we don't try to get too many taking off, but at the same time be planning and getting ahead, so you know what's coming, and we have a chance to study these things and know what's going to help us best. Secondly, roads and infrastructure repair. Upkeep, keep the streets safe and better. We're doing that. And the third thing that I'd like to emphasize, that in light of the projects that we've already started on, that we need to get things done. We don't just start, keep adding things. We decide, we've got a master plan, some key elements of that, downtown Riverlot Development, some funding from the state, $600,000 to help with the connectivity on the trails and the walking bridge. Let's get some things done for Fergus Falls and get that movement going, and enough studies. Really, let's get some of these things done. So, those are my three projects, or my three emphases. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
Well, for my three priorities, I have put the RTC as number one. That's been an issue that we've dealt with since, oh, it's been at least 10 years roughly, but anyway, saving that, I think, is a huge factor. It's historical. It's a landmark of Fergus Falls. There's so many opportunities. People have asked for dog parks. We could have a dog park up there. Summer Fest is up there. Tours, movies, weddings, pictures, people take graduation pictures up there. It's just beautiful, my daughter included. Economic developments would produce jobs and tax revenue could come out of that area. The RTC is our jewel. The Riverwalk is great. We have great potential for that, and it's time. Many towns have Riverwalks, but Fergus is unique, and it has the Kirkbride. A lot of other towns can't have that. They don't have that. It's something that we have. Roads, that's a secondary one. That's the next one. How to find resources to fix the roads in towns that have been neglected far too long, which is why they've become such a problem. We need to figure out what we can do to save so that there's dollars set aside for the road budget. And I believe that the Band-Aid policy is not the answer. The tar and pebbles method takes resources and money that could be used to resurface streets. If it takes a little longer to resurface a street, I believe it's a better result than to continually patch them. If we went through on the south side of town here that they patched, it's rougher than it was before. And then, third is industries good-paying jobs. Look into the job market, see what business would be for our best choices to pursue to come to town. Work on creating jobs through utilizing the RTC. Possibilities are endless. Take advantage of it, and we can proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gustafson?
Business is clearly a high priority. It's a pretty alarming time with all the businesses that have closed in Fergus Falls, and I think it's important for the city to work with incoming and expanding businesses. Part of the mission and vision of Fergus Falls includes planning for the future for our citizens and planning for continued growth and development. This is a guideline that should steer the city council's decisions. I believe it is the responsibility of city staff and council members to engage in the process of expanding childcare. The city currently has a shortage of over 200 childcare spots, and there's a task force that is starting to tackle this issue. As a working mother, I unfortunately experienced the stress of childcare shortage. Families shouldn't have to rearrange their work schedules, have multiple drop-offs, rely on extended family if they have extended family here, or cut back on hours because they don't have access to reliable and steady childcare. If we have business without childcare, we don't really have a solution. We have a bigger barrier to workforce. The city has already started incorporating the Downtown and Riverfront Master Plan. I think there's a big need for recreational activities for all ages, including middle school, teen, and young adults. Like the childcare shortage, I think the city should help facilitate and entertain ideas for recreation. So, I think there's a lot of things going on, but we need childcare, we need business, and we need things to do.
Thank you. Our next question is a two-part question, and you'll have two minutes to answer each part of the question. We'll start with John first. The first part of the question is, "This year, we have seen changes in the city's economic development structure. What are your views on those changes, and what is your vision for economic growth in Fergus Falls?"
Well, looking at the history here, we have traditional and non-traditional thinking. Our traditional thinking is people my age, where we've grown up where you go to the store and you buy stuff, and so the big stores have done well. The non-traditional thinking is where we're at today. The young people, they don't go to stores to shop. It's online. It's through their computers. It's through their phones. So, we've lost a lot of businesses due to that. Looking into the process by which local governments use their resources to stimulate private investments. Also, align workforce and economic development to leverage new and complementary resources from a diverse set of partners. Develop new markets and to enhance employer attraction efforts. Combining forces helps advance a comprehensive strategy and approach to develop, nurture, and retain the talented workforce necessary to support industries critical to economic success, including staff funding and organization priorities. And be committed to moving low-income residents who are either unemployed or underemployed into well-paying jobs in strong sectors. I think that would help our community a lot, and we can do that with many different ways. The RTC is a great example of where we can move forward and put our energies. We have great potential to bring jobs there that are computer-oriented, that are things that we need to get in our community, that it would be good-paying jobs. There's a lot of ways to go about this, and if we work together, I think we can accomplish that. Thank you.
Thank you. The second part of the question touches on issues that everyone has alluded to so far, and that is that some of the challenges to economic development are affordable housing, childcare availability, and workforce shortages. Do you have any creative solutions to these issues?
Yes, I do. As far as the rental price, the property, the rental in Fergus Falls is extremely high compared to years ago. Anybody that's lived here for many years knows that it was very low, and it probably is all over the country. And so, all rent is high, and so we've got to figure out what drives the cost of rent up. Is there places that are vacant, or are we a shortage of any vacant places for people? Then you've got to ask the question, "Do people want houses or apartments?" A house is an investment. An apartment gets you a place to live. And so, we need to look into that, and as far as daycare, that's a critical thing. And as a city, we could fund opportunities for people to start businesses to do childcare or to see how we can improve that. There's great possibilities to get more daycares in the community if that's what's needed. The city can work with that department, and there's many opportunities, if we work together, to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline, we'll go to you next. And just to repeat the question, the first part of the question is, "What are your views on the changes in economic development and your vision of economic growth in Fergus Falls?"
I was glad to hear that the makeup of the Greater Fergus Falls group included people of different demographics and varying backgrounds. Economic development can be a much larger beast than what one person can handle, especially if that person has many other workloads to juggle. I think it's very important that the city staff, the council members, and the community members and Greater Fergus Falls work really closely together to cultivate expansion of the current businesses that want to do that and to excite new business in town.
Thank you. The second part of the question, again, is some of the challenges you've already talked about to economic development are affordable housing, childcare availability, and workforce shortages. Do you have any creative solutions for these issues?
I think we need to find a way to include some work site training and jobs, potentially starting in middle school and even high school, and definitely the college. I think introductions to the working world can help retain our younger generations and get them excited about careers that are in town. If they have an opportunity to see some career options and get their feet wet, they will have a great experience, but they'll also make big connections to the businesswomen and men that are in town. Giving teenagers a sense of ownership in their community is important for more than just the economic piece. It gives them a sense of pride in themselves and in Fergus Falls. As stated before, we're in dire need of childcare in Fergus, and in a 20-mile radius, we're over 500 childcare spots short. I think improving that childcare accessibility can help improve our business landscape by getting those that might be staying at home with their children back into the workforce. I think that work site childcare is a really big topic, and I think that's something that could definitely work in Fergus Falls. I'd be really excited to help facilitate that option, especially if I was up on the city council. And housing is a major crisis. There's more than 40% of the renters in town are spending over 30% of their annual income on housing. Average is usually about 28%, so that's something that has to be looked at. New home construction costs are way more than purchasing a house, and the number of homes for sale are not meeting the demand out there right now. Multifamily housing has been going up, which is a good start. Alone-drying businesses in town will not improve our economy. A multifaceted approach of increased accessible housing and increased and affordable childcare is going to be a determining force in a family's decision to take a job or bring a business to town.
Thank you. Rod, we'll finish with you on this question. Again, the first part is, as we've all seen, changes to economic development structure over the last year. What are your views on these changes, and what is your vision for economic growth in Fergus Falls?
Well, I believe government can be effective, although it sometimes seems very slow. I don't think that government is effective in creating business because it isn't their primary role. I believe government must welcome business. It must provide the place and be willing to incubate and encourage those businesses. But we need people who are in business, who know business, who are trained by business and think business, to help create new businesses. I cite Holland at Michigan as an example. They have gone from, they have a video called Wilderness to World Class, and their whole philosophy is to come, get alongside a business to have, when someone comes to town, that they have right next to their main government offices, a business incubator where you can go and get all your questions answered very easily, and you're hooked up with a mentor who walks you through the process, and that stimulates and encourages, because I've talked to people who find it daunting to go through all the different regulations and know what to do. And I know we provide some help, but I think we can do better at that. The constraints also of a city in negotiating contracts or trying to do things for business is very obvious to me after being on the council, because of open meeting laws, et cetera. You must be able to talk to people about business, and I think that's why alongside private, like we have with the Greater Fergus Falls Corp. now, and we've all endorsed that as council members. Got my button on here. Yes, okay, go forward with Fergus Falls. And finally, I would like to say that we need to partner with all those who can make it happen. As Caroline mentioned, it's multifaceted, it's multi-layered. There's not just one solution. You can't just say, "Oh, we need jobs, or we're going to do businesses." Housing incentives, so that we have, the labor force is really, to me, our huge issue that we're not addressing enough, and that relates to childcare, and we'll get into that a little more in the next part, I believe, so thank you.
Along with that, multifaceted. Along with that multifaceted approach, the second part of the question, again, is some of the challenges to economic development are affordable housing, childcare availability, and workforce shortages. Do you have any creative solutions to these issues?
Economic development is stymied by the lack of attractive jobs and advancement with mobility, with attractive competitive wages. Affordability is directly related to income level, so I'm saying both and. We need affordable housing, but we don't need to just have affordable housing and maintain the same wage level that we have, or the same number. We have to be able to create economic growth by bringing in people and attracting people who also can make a better wage and a better living. So I would work to do the both and, increase the success of our 17-some industries and manufacturers and our businesses downtown, and provide incentives so that we have housing that relates to what we need. But however, studies don't always show everything. The business, this is a good example, businessmen find out answers. On River Oaks Landing, that whole idea of creating an upper-level apartment building that isn't funded by TIF was successful because business, a businessperson decided to do something, and they're going to do more. So they filled that up, 24 units, and they're going to build some more. And that brings real taxes back to Fergus, in terms of our tax base increase. So when we look at these overall shortages and housing, which is crucial, we have to look at how do we build in the attractiveness of bringing people into Fergus Falls and making it a place they want to live and work. Now childcare is directly, as Caroline has pointed out, it's directly related to this, and that has to be a major issue going forward. But I believe we have staff that we've engaged in community development that can carry that forward. And I'm looking for us to see 75 to 100 unit spaces for childcare made available, hopefully in the next year, that we can, and I think the city council wants to act on that. So we rely on the collaboration with staff for that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go on to the next question, I just want to remind the candidates, I've been informed that the television, the microphones, they're having some issues picking up, John particularly. So I think you put that over your mic, but I learned this the hard way on Monday. You don't have to be on top of the mic for it to pick you up, and so the mic will pick you up even if you're, you know, just talk into the microphone to make sure that...
Hopefully it'll work better.
Yeah, we get you. So we'll go to the next question, and we'll start with Caroline. This is our more in-depth question, so you'll have three minutes to answer this one. And it's about the Kirk Bride, hot button in our community for a long time. The city council has made progress on reducing the footprint of the RTC campus. How would you continue to work with the council and the citizens on the next steps? And also, is there anything in the past that you would have done differently? And if so, what would you have done differently and why?
Jean, you probably don't even need to start your clock on this one. I have a pretty short answer. The majority of citizens that I've talked to said that if a private developer is interested in redeveloping the building, the city should entertain that option. They've basically had enough of the RTC topic and don't want to see their taxes going into redevelopment and upkeep of the building. Overall, they're pleased with the direction that City Hall and city staff are going with it. It's really easy to look back on something and say you would have done it differently, but overall, I'm happy with the direction things are going with the RTC.
Thank you. Rod?
You want to repeat the question, first part?
Yes. So the city council has made progress, as you know, on reducing the footprint of the RTC campus. How would you continue to work with the council and the citizens on next steps? And is there anything in the past that you would have done differently? And if so, what would you have done differently and why?
Truth be told, knowing behind the scenes what we've done, and that includes our mayor, the council legislators, and staff, we have made real strides in this last 10, you know, you think of over the last 10 years. In this last four years, we've made real strides to both protect the taxpayers from future liabilities, and by, and creating a way to go forward in a staged development that's reasonable. Everyone should remember when we talk about the Kirk Bride and its footprint, that it is a nationally-sized footprint with a state-sized solution to a problem that we had, and we were filling that for the state, and to some degree, the nation, for over 100 years. And so the Kirk Brides that were built served their purposes. And, but right now, the council under the leadership of the mayor and others who've worked hard, and I want to cite Councilman Arneson and Ruffer for going to St. Paul and cutting through some of the red tape to help us get Shippo to realize we need staged development. We need to divide it up and then take each piece as we can. Before that, we had to deal with the whole thing at once. So any developer was charged, basically, with kind of making sure that anything they did didn't hurt all the rest of that facility. All that 600,000-some square feet, that's an impossible task. And so I believe we have made the strides to protect the taxpayers, and that's crucial to me. I'll continue to work closely with colleagues and others in collaborating on this, so that there is no burden on the Fergus taxpayers for supporting this in the future. And the Kirk Bride, yes, it is a historical building, it has value, but reasonably, look at the size of our town and look where we're at. We have to go forward. And I will say, we can't be obsessed with that and still do a good job on making sure we maintain all our businesses, taking care of all the other things, because honestly, you can only do so many things at once. And I think in the past, we've neglected some things because we've been overly obsessed with the Kirk Bride. But we are not the West Central Minnesota Salvation Group for saving all that building. We are simply a city that has to survive and grow regionally, and there's a lot of needs for young families, for a community center where year-round where they can have something to do and not be outside or play, just playing on their phones, for a swimming facility that really meets the needs. People have wanted that for many years, and we've started and stopped since 2010 on this. We need to get a swimming facility. And these things have to prioritize ahead of, in my mind, preservation of the whole building. So I think we can save what we need to and the essential parts, but we have to be able to go forward, as we're doing now. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
Well, I guess I've got a totally different view than the other two candidates on the RTC. First of all, I don't want to see the footprint get any smaller. I want to save the Kirk Bride. I believe a lot of people in this town do. Like I mentioned earlier, there's people that take pictures up there. There's weddings that could be done, graduations. People have asked for a dog park. There is many, many acres up there. A dog park could be brought in. There's hiking bicycle trails that could be brought in. Visitors and tourists could come, buy gas, food. Economy grows, the city benefits. I recently talked to somebody who said a defense contractor came into town on his way through to Minneapolis, and he didn't have anything to do, and he'd heard about this Kirk Bride. So he went up there, took pictures, and said, wow, that is a spectacular place. Also, some people from Illinois came up and said that is the best thing this town has going for them. Like I reiterated earlier, the Kirk Bride is a jewel. You don't have them very often. In fact, there's one in Michigan, I believe, that was in worse shape than ours, and they managed to restore it little by little, and it's now been a great economic development for the city. The city has prospered from it. I definitely think there could have been some things differently done. There could have been advantages to, many opportunities for the city to make money on this site that the council turned down in the past, movie opportunities, many other things. Jay Leno has talked about Fergus Falls on his show, because at the time, we got new garbage cans, and he said, wow, Fergus Falls got new garbage cans. That's their biggest thing. Well, there's other things we can be known for besides our garbage cans, and we have many opportunities to market the Kirk Bride. We have great staff, we have citizens in this town, the media can help us. You cannot replace it once it's gone. If you tear it down, you'll never get it back. We can do many things with that property, and it can be our landmark of Fergus Falls. There's many other things we can do. The dairy property, if we can purchase that at the price I've heard, there's opportunity there. The river itself is good. But that building up there and that property is a great thing for Fergus Falls. And I believe if we work together on it, we can save it and make it work. When people got together in Fergus Falls and wanted a hockey arena, it happened. If we have that same motivation and passion for the Kirk Bride, we can make it work. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, we'll move on, we'll start with Rod. And as you know, serving on the city council is a big-time commitment and can be unpredictable. Tell us about your ability to serve in this capacity. Additionally, communication to constituents is important, since you reflect their interests. If elected, how will you stay connected with the people that you represent?
And this is all in two minutes, right?
Yep. Ready, set, go.
It's like serving on the council, there's never enough time. Serving on the council involves as much time as you want to give it. If you just go by the requirements for showing up for meetings, you can do that. If you want to go after funding, you can do that. If you would like to do more for the city and visit with people about projects and get on the side with people and talk about collaboration, you can do that. It's up to you how much time you want to put in after the council meetings and the requirements. Someone from Ward Four recently told me, Rod, thank you for doing the research, for asking the hard questions and getting to the bottom of issues. But I didn't do that by not spending a lot of time. So, and my wife will say, you know, I've tracked my time, and I'm often putting 20 to 25 hours a week in for the city. And I know that's not what I expect of everyone, and I've worked as hard as I can, and it's up to each of us with our gifts, but I have worked hard for Ward Four, and I have had the time and taken the time so that I leave that all on the field at the end of the day. I want to make sure I've done my best. Worked on a lot of committees, not going to go into that, but my record shows that I have worked hard. Second part, the communications. It is important, connecting and listening, and not only with the department heads and others we have to work with, but with the citizens, with the people downtown. Keith and Bernadette at Sears when they wanted to put in flowers, I helped get that done. The Lake Alice, Mrs. Morrison, when she handed me a folder this thick about Lake Alice for like the last 50 years, I looked at it, I read it, and I worked with the DNR and others behind the scenes to raise the water level so we could start skating a couple years ago. I've heard concerns of residents and worked on them. Lucy Harworth has told me, Rod, you get things done. Thank you. So communication with the public and with everyone else is important, and I continue to do that on a regular basis. Much of that is behind the scenes, but again, the proof is in the pudding. What do we get done? How does it get done? It shows how much you're communicating with the constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
I have been self-employed for about 25 years. I've learned to adapt to many problems and unpredictable situations. You get phone calls in the evenings, you have to go out to work sometimes Sundays, you have to be flexible hours. I would get together with 10 or more people from my ward every two to three months and discuss the issues that the city is dealing with at the time, listen to their input. I would ask members of the group to talk to their neighbors, and that way we can keep citizens informed of issues and let them be involved in the decision-making of the city. In years past, the fourth ward council person, she got together and invited us to come to her place, and she would discuss meetings, issues that would be taken in the city, and we had an opportunity to go to other people in our ward and discuss that with them. I think that's a great opportunity to branch out and to get more people involved. Ultimately, we are representing the people of our ward, and to get to know them better, you need to talk with them. And the many times that I've ran for council and offices, I've went out, talked to a lot of people in town, got to meet a lot of people. And it's really fascinating to hear their stories and to get their inputs. And I think if we do more of that, we can get a feel of where the city should go and the direction people are wanting it to go, and so that they feel that they are part of the decision-making, and that their voice does matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline?
My job can be flexible as needed, and I have a very able and supportive husband, so there should be no concerns about my capacity to serve on the city council. I thrive on being busy. My time commitment does not shock me. My entire life, I've been very involved in many different things. I currently serve on three boards, on top of raising a family, a full-time job, and enjoying many of my hobbies. Furthermore, as an elected official of the city, I would have a duty to be present and involved. That's something I'm looking forward to. I'd like to make something pretty clear. If elected, I'm all in. I plan to keep communication open with the people I represent. As citizens, it's important to know and understand what is going on and how and why decisions are made. It's also important for citizens to learn the facts and not speculate. While being informed is the responsibility of the people, it is equally critical for council members to educate citizens and stay open to ideas and concerns any of the citizens might have. Citizens have my email address, they have my phone number, and I'm excited for more civil and productive conversations. I've had a bunch in the ward already. It's been very stimulating and exciting, and there is excitement in Fergus Falls. So people can contact me, and I'll make sure to get ahold of them back.
Thank you. John, we'll start our next question with you. Again, you have two minutes, and this has already been touched on as well, but recently, another important issue to many citizens is a community aquatic facility. A citizen-led committee has presented findings and recommendations for next steps. What is your view on this project?
I would want to review their findings to see the feasibility, also if we can afford this facility, and if we'd be able to bring in revenue enough to sustain itself. Since the present council has already committed funds for an amphitheater across from City Hall, we are left with a choice. Sometimes we cannot afford every plan or every project that we'd like. We can ask the citizens which project they would consider having if it comes down to only one, being able to find the necessary funding to do just one. I feel it's important to let the citizens of this town have ownership of the decisions. I'd like to meet with the committee and discuss possibilities on ways to find the funding needed to build an aqua center, have discussions if we are to proceed, and if so, where the best location to build the facility. Ultimately, it comes down to our wants and our needs of Fergus Falls. We need to be able to fund our needs in the budget while the list of wants should come down to what the citizens of Fergus Falls want and are willing to pay for, and also what benefits Fergus Falls the most. As we all know, it takes money to do any project. So to me, there's, different people want different things, but we can't have everything unless we have an open pocketbook, and I don't think we do. And so we need to determine what we can afford, what serves the city best, what brings revenue in, and where we should spend our money. We spend a lot on consultants and designing projects, to the point of millions of dollars. That in itself could fund projects. I think we need to look at things a little differently than what's been done, and I think if we do that, we've got great potential. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline?
I've been a member of the citizen-led aquatics committee as a park and rec board member and as a Lake Region healthcare employee since its inception two and a half years ago. According to the 2017 aquatics survey, completed by over 1,500 people, 94% of the respondents indicated that it was important to expand the recreational aquatic facilities in the city. The respondents also noted that they wanted an outdoor aquatic facility over a splash pad or indoor facility. Citizens and guests of Fergus Falls insist on quality recreational facilities to provide accessible and affordable programs. An indoor facility with the same amenities costs four times as much to build and nine times as much to operate while only bringing in three times as much revenue. Cities who operate indoor facilities usually need to subsidize the operating costs. Both the YMCA and the school district have been involved with the committee since the start and were not interested in a partnership. The focus of the project was affordable recreation, and given the costs of operations, fee for an indoor facility would be much higher than an outdoor and would be cost-prohibitive to many families in this town. The goal was to be inclusive, not exclusive. Ultimately, I'm...
Ultimately, I'm in favor of an outdoor seasonal aquatics facility because based on the survey results, that's what our citizens want and are willing to pay for with user fees. An aquatics facility of the current proposed size and scope is affordable for a majority of the cities and for majority of the families in Fergus Falls. Also, a lot of our citizens travel to neighboring communities to use their aquatics facilities. Building an aquatic center in our town will keep folks in town, draw visitors, and help facilitate our economy.
Thank you. Rod?
Well, three and a half years ago, I started a survey in response to people that I had met walking the ward when I was a write-in candidate that said, we need a year-round facility that includes aquatics that where our kids can go to. And they knew there was a why, they knew school has things, but I think there's something was lacking for them, they felt, in the overall picture. So, I did a survey monkey instrument, and we had 1,100 responses. The responses to that survey were that 60% of the people, more than 60%, said, yes, we want a aquatics facility. And I did ask the question year-round in there, so it was not like a choice of summer or, so I know that is part of my statistics that I gathered. But 60-some percent, and that was ahead of the Kirkbride, it was a major thing. And it was one of my platforms of seven things that I went back and looked at what I said I was going to do. You know, that's one of the things I wanted to try to do is establish an aquatics facility. Unfortunately, we didn't have a lot of energy from people at the beginning of the four-year term last year to get that going with the energy now in the committee, I think it's there. My only concern is that we make sure that we collaborate fully. In researching this, I called the YMCA National Director of Collaboration or Building, whatever it's, his name is Brad Ellenbacher. And he said, in a town your size, you have to make sure you collaborate and partner or it won't work. So, I just want to make sure we do it wisely. I'm all for that facility, and especially as it has synergy with other things so that we can, we don't have to put the burden on the taxpayer. And in the future, as we go forward, collaboration is more and more essential if we're going to be a regional presence. And we have a lot of people to draw on in our area. So, I don't think that the present statistics show the collaboration potential with that. So, let's keep going on it and work hard together. Differences sometimes make us better. Thank you.
Thank you. This will be our last question of the day, and we'll start with Caroline. The City Council is a nonpartisan body of government, yet our country, as we have seen recently, and I guess not so recently, but it's been highlighted more recently, is more, our country is more polarized than ever. You will be working with aldermen, staff and constituents who may think differently than you do. Tell us how you will successfully work as part of a team for the benefit of Fergus Falls.
Many of the city's staff members have taken time to visit with me over the past few months, and I really appreciate their knowledge and professionalism and hope to continue to work with them. In my line of work and with my extensive background in coaching and sports, I understand the importance of both being a leader and a team player. Leader brings out the best in others while uniting people to work towards a common goal. Oftentimes, a leader is not easily recognized because they're guiding and insisting, and they're not dominating the conversations. I'm a firm believer in treating everyone with respect and integrity and expect the same in return. People that feel included and appreciated foster strong, trusting relationships and help develop a resilient community. It's impractical to believe that I'll see eye to eye with everyone, but it's important to me to cultivate a positive environment through open communication. I'm a hard worker that understands the importance of working together. Cooperation and communication are keys for success.
Thank you. Rod?
Collaboration, it seems, is a little bit like cooking. You don't know what it is until you get to the results. Can talk about collaboration all day, but in the end, we have to somehow find a way with our many differences to work together, which is, I think, the problem at the national level, which you've highlighted. What I would like to say is in voices from my constituents in my ward and colleagues, and that's on both sides of the aisle, that people say, yeah, Rod is passionate and works hard, but he treats everyone the same, and he's seeking comprehensive and cost-effective solutions. Another person in my ward, Ellen Eastby, told me, I'm impressed with Rod's collaborative approach when facing the issues and getting things done for the city and appreciate his willingness to listen to my concerns and then offer realistic options to pursue. I've worked hard on various projects. Again, I'm saying that the proof is in the record. Amy Johnson from my ward, I went door-to-door with her about the speed limit on Elkhart, the dangers. She then took that further and had an article in the paper. We're still working on that because of the transfer of the county, et cetera. County Road One changed, so there's some things that held that up. But I have put things that constituents asked me to do at the top of the list, and working together means listening to our constituents. The role of a city council member, according to the Minnesota League of Cities, is to secure a strong, healthy, prosperous future for the city they represent. That means laying aside our own views sometimes and just going after things that we really know will help long-term. And that's what I've sought to do, and collaboration is one of the words that I get is defined in the doing, just like so many things in life. And I believe I've represented the city and Ward Four well in that respect. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
Well, first and foremost, I'll represent the people of Fourth Ward to the best of my abilities and work on keeping the residents informed of all the important issues in Fergus Falls. I'll work as a team to move Fergus Falls forward for a better place to live and work, to help also fellow council members to look at issues we face and express the concerns of the people of Fergus Falls, to share and listen to information from other council members so that we can all make wise decisions on how to vote on issues, to ask questions of others so we can determine what's the best direction. We have a great staff and people working for our city. The heads of the departments and the staff work endlessly every day to make sure that the city runs efficiently. They know their areas of expertise. I can't do what they can do. But working together, we have an opportunity to move forward. As in the construction business, you have many subcontractors that work together to ultimately come together and build a house, and a contractor oversees it all. But each and every one of those people that build that house are important. And I see that as the same with our city. Each and every department that we have working for the city is their specialty, and they know their area like nobody else can. Plumber, electrician, they all know their areas. And when they work together, the end result is a beautiful house. And we can have that same thing for Fergus Falls if we come together and work together. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we've come to the end of our question-answer session, and now we'll have our two-minute closing statements. We'll start with John, and then we'll go to Rod, and then Caroline. And please tell the voters why they should vote for you.
Well, it's ultimately their decision as to who they think would best represent them to move this city forward. I have laid out my plan. It doesn't quite agree with everything other people have, but it's what I feel is best for this city from talking to the many people in Fourth Ward and the possibilities. I ask for the people of Fourth Ward to vote for me November 6th because I will represent them for the city. I really believe that the Kirkbride and that area, that land, has great potential. We want a swimming park, aquatic center. We could have that there. We could have so much in that area if we just put our direction there to save it and to use it to benefit Fergus Falls. There's many projects in the wind right now, and it all comes down to what we can afford. What's the budget? We've seen how the budget of Fergus Falls is $45 million a year. As we talk about these projects, that budget will increase, just like the deficit of the United States increases every day we keep spending money. So, we have to work within our means. And I feel that I could be a person to do that with my expertise and my experience in self-employment and to see how things are working in this city. I think that could be a great aspect for the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rod?
First of all, I want to say thank you again to the voters in Ward Four that elected me four years ago as a write-in. I also want to say that whoever is elected among those of us up here, I will support and stand behind their work and encourage them. And I appreciate the turnout and the dialogue we've been able to have because we have more diversity, we have more people involved in this discussion, and we'll be better for it. I'd like you to imagine that you're driving into Fergus Falls for the first time. Having lived in other cultures, I've done this many times. A brand-new town, what's there? What do you see? The curious thing is, you don't see the same things a year later that you saw when you first go to a town. I was told a story about someone driving into town for the first time with a friend. First thing they noticed was the old mill. The person who lived here didn't notice it, but they saw. What is that shuttered, huge building there? Five stories standing there imposing with broken windows? Oh, that's our old mill. We used to have the best milling facility between St. Cloud and the West Coast at one time. Well, it's closed now. What are you doing about it? Well, I don't know. They drove down farther and looked across and saw the dairy with a smokestack that's ready to crumble. They wondered what they're going to do with the dairy. They saw the Kirkbride, wondering how we're going to preserve that. What do you see when you look at Fergus? Do you see things we have to take care of? Do you see the future? I would like to say that the way forward for us is to truly have both vision and hard work and be together on things. And one thing I'd like to say is that there's plenty of potential in Fergus Falls. There's plenty of hard-working people, but we have to be able to pull together. Few things I'd mention. We've been working, talking about a cheese plant recently. Let's not forget that agribusiness drove a lot of Fergus Falls wealth for many years. And we've got a shuttered mill, and we've got the cheese plant, the dairy there. There are other things we can do in that regard, and I would only encourage us to put our heads together and to think creatively and work hard for the future. We have a beautiful town. Let's continue to make it grow and be a regional center. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline?
If you vote for me, you'll be voting for a positive and strong female voice. You'll be voting for someone who appreciates diverse opinions and collaboration. If elected as your councilwoman, I will continue my hard work and involvement. You'll keep seeing me at sporting events, fundraisers, art events and more. This is my home, and my husband and I are raising our kids here. It's important for me, my family, and the people of Fergus Falls to be proud of our city. I want to see Fergus Falls as a thriving community where people want to live, work and play. I want to thank everyone for being, taking the time to be an informed voter. All the answers that I had here today and more can be found on my website at www.carolinegustafson.com. And please feel free to contact me at any time. I'd appreciate your vote. Fergus for Gus.
Well, thank you to our candidates today and everyone for attending today. You can join us on Friday as we will be meeting with Justin Arneson, who is an unopposed candidate from Ward Three. Again, please remember to vote on November 6th so your voices are heard. And again, Ward Four votes at the Hillcrest Gymnasium. The polls are open on November 6th from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. in the evening. Thank you.